Senator San Agustin, you are recognized on the motion to place it on third reading for discussion, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that Bill 216-35 is an act to add a new section five to M of chapter five in public law 35-36 relative to establishing the rate of stipend for the Guam Police Department's civilian volunteer police reserve to the third reading file for discussion.
And it was introduced, Senator San Agustin, by who?
Madam Speaker, by myself and you, Madam Speaker.
And COR, Bill 216-35, COR?
Yes, ma'am.
On that motion, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This bill will increase the stipend amount that our GPD reservists work alongside our men and women in blue. This adjustment will not affect their FY20 budget. As the chief has stated, they will be able to cover this increase in their appropriation. Our approval of this stipend increase will bring parity to these reservists, bring them to par with their counterparts in the judiciary. For so long, our front line of safety, GPD has had the assistance of these reservists, working together to ensure that our community remains safe and that individuals who break the law are brought to begin their due process. I ask my colleagues for their support on this amendment, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on the bill. Sujus Massey. But, Madam Speaker, I have one amendment to the bill.
Please proceed.
And that's on page two, line seven. I guess during the process, it's FY2020 budget, line seven, the effective October 1st, 2019.
On that motion, on that motion to correct 2020 to 2019, 2019, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. On the amendment, Senator Telotatigui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm kind of concerned when you have a bill that's retroactive, you know, going back, you're talking about October 1st, 2019. That's already past the effective date. So I'd like a short recess to ask Legal if we can do something like that. We had some issues with the property tax, you know, trying to retroact the property tax issue. So if I could just have a minute and speak with the author and see about making an amendment to that.
So noted. We are in recess for a moment. Iminitran Taisinko, Nalesla Turen Guam is back from recess. Senator Tatigui, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and we were able to discuss with Legal the legality of something retroactive, considering this is not something that we are expecting from an individual to pay to the government, but to the government to pay that individually retroactively. With Legal, it said it's fine, so I'm going to take the advice of Legal. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tatigui. On the main motion, anyone else wishing to speak? Senator Therese Terlai, you are recognized, and then Senator Kelly Marsh Titino. Senator Therese Terlai, you're recognized on the main motion. Oh, I apologize. On the amendment, on the San Agustin amendment, Senator Terlai, you are recognized. On the amendment, anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment from 2020 to 2019? If not, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. On the main motion, Senator Regina Biscoley, you are recognized. On the main motion, your hand was raised. Thank you, Senator Lee. Please proceed.
Sujus Massey, Madam Speaker, and Hafadeh colleagues, I rise in support of Bill Number 216-35COR. Madam Speaker, the findings of a recent survey released December 6th of this year by the Guam Police Department show that our people desire an improvement in police visibility. According to the survey, respondents' evaluation of the frequency of police visibility in the communities is rather low and consistent across all four precincts. But, Madam Speaker, we don't need a survey to tell us that. We live in these communities. We have heard stories of victims of violent crime, victims of crime in our communities. And, Madam Speaker, Bill 216 aims to prioritize public safety. The chief of police even stated at the bill's public hearing that GPD expects an increased interest by qualified candidates to join the civilian volunteer police reserve program. Recent assessments of the CVPRP show that 20 reservists report for duty, enough to receive a stipend on a monthly basis, according to GPD. Bill 216 ensures that our civilian volunteers are compensated for their time and their effort to provide our people safety. With more boots on the ground, GPD will be better equipped to serve our island community, providing support wherever help is needed. With more boots on the ground, more investigative and crime prevention work can be undertaken. With more boots on the ground, our people can feel safer in their homes, in their villages, in their communities. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 216, and I urge my colleagues to do the same. Sujus Massey.
Buen pavez, Senator Biscoley. On the main motion, I have Senator Marsh Titino, then Senator Pedro Terlai on the main motion. Assistant Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sujus Massey, Madam Speaker. I too rise in support. We are needing additional police out there. The numbers that we've been hearing lately or more recently in the news have been saying that we are improving, but there's definitely room for more improvement. I have a point of inquiry, and so it's really to get an understanding of this stipend. If I could hear from the author of the bill, how many hours it takes to meet this threshold of earning $500, and how this compares to the kind of pay that is typical for that kind of work?
Thank you, Senator Titino. Senator San Agustin, would you like to answer that inquiry? Would you like to yield?
Yes, Madam Speaker. First, I think I heard more than one question, but it's 42 hours that they work. And what was the second question? Was the difference with others?
I will go ahead and restate your question, Senator Marsh Titino.
Sujus Massey, Madam Speaker. My other question is, so if it's at 42 hours, I think this breaks down to about $11 an hour. And so I was just wondering how that compares to somebody who is a full working employee.
Thank you, Senator Titino. Senator San Agustin, would you like to yield?
Madam Speaker, the word "volunteer," these are folks that are either retired from the police department, retired from the military, retired from Gulf Guam. And for many, for several years, they pursued this. All they wanted is to make sure they're up to equal pay as if you were a reservist in the marshal, in the courts. That's all they're asking for. If we can pay them more, my colleagues, please propose it, and I'll support it.
Thank you, Senator San Agustin. Senator Titino, does that answer your inquiry?
Essentially, I, my guess would be that it's probably a cost savings, and it is. It's something that, additional that they're doing for our community on our behalf. And so I just wanted a clear understanding, but it's good to see that there are regulations in place, there are going to be a certain number of hours that they're going to achieve, and that we're going to give them some sort of consideration for the gas that it takes and all of the other things that it takes that cost money for them to be able to provide those services that are badly needed by our community. Sujus Massey.
Buen pavez, Senator Marsh Titino. Senator Pedro Terlai, you are recognized on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First off, I just want to say that I'm one of the initiator for the increase of stipend from 42 hours to $500. And I just wanted to ask the author if he can include me as a co-sponsor of this bill, and I rise in support of 216. Thank you very much.
On the motion to include Senator Pedro Terlai as a co-sponsor of the legislation, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Anyone else on the main motion? Senator Therese Terlai, on the main motion, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm trying to read the fiscal note, but I just, it's too small. I can't read it on my phone, so I was, I stand in support of this bill to set a stipend rate for Guam Police Department civilian volunteer police reservists. The bill makes changes to the budget law, however, and that's presumably for maybe just the fiscal year. So I wanted to clarify with the sponsor if he would yield, if this is intended to be a permanent stipend rate for the police reservists or just for the fiscal year 2020 that we are in right now.
Thank you, Senator Terlai. Senator San Agustin, would you like to yield?
Yes, Madam Speaker. This is to cover first the budget, and my office is looking at, if need be, we'll introduce the bill to make it permanent, at least to establish that 500 would be the minimum stipend for them.
Thank you, Senator San Agustin. Senator Terlai, does that suffice?
He intends it to be permanent?
He said, Senator San Agustin, would you like to restate your answer?
The bill, Madam Speaker, the bill is to increase it based on the Budget Act. My staff is reviewing it to ensure, if it doesn't make it permanent or the standard, then we'll introduce a bill to follow up to make it the standard pay.
Thank you, Senator San Agustin. Senator Teresa, does that answer?
I want to thank the sponsor for yielding. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And so, just a minor note, so I was reviewing the fiscal note, and so the bill had been originally written to be effective in October 1, 2020, and obviously, the fiscal impact of that in fiscal year, the current fiscal year, sorry, it was going to be, the bill was written to be effective on October 1, 2020, which would be fiscal year 2021. So for fiscal year 2020, which we are in right now, it was having no effect. But now that we've amended it to read October 1, 2019, that's our current fiscal year, and it was not budgeted for in the police department's budget when they came in. And so I just wanted to find out the effects of this, if we've calculated, I mean, on the budget, and there's no appropriation made for this, and I just wanted to make sure that this is covered then in the police department's existing budget or not. And, Madam Speaker, if I may add, that in the hearing, the public hearing on this bill, there was no testimony, that no one showed up, there was no testimony, and we've, when I looked through the committee report, I did not see any written testimony from the police department either. So there's really only the fiscal note that outlines the number of policemen we're talking about, the number of, yeah, hours that they serve. So if the sponsor would yield to clarify whether this amount is covered in the budget for the current police, the current police department's budget, or whether, how is it going to be funded?
Thank you, Senator Terlai. Senator San Agustin, would you like to yield to that question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. In the committee report and at the hearing, the chief submitted a written testimony. And you'll find on page one, on the third paragraph, the Guam Police Department projected an increase to the CVPR stipend from 250 to 500, and included this projection in the executive budget request for fiscal year 2020. I would go then and admit that, number one, maybe that's an administrative oversight. We should have just put the 500 in the budget. The chief called me up when we were looking at it before I introduced the bill, and he said, "Senator, it was agreed it would be 500 dollars a month." I said, "Yes." I says, "The verb is not there, we have the money, we can pay them." If you introduce that language, I said, "Fine, we introduce it. This is the bill." So the ability, and if my colleagues want, we can call the chief here, and we can have him explain that.
Thank you, Senator San Agustin. Senator Therese, does that answer your inquiry?
All right. If I could have one minute recess to consult with Legal, Madam Speaker.
I will give you a moment's recess. Iminitran Taisinko, Nalesla Turen Guam is back from recess. Senator Terlai, I will still recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I've been assured by the chairperson on appropriations that this amount, if we increase the stipend to 500 for this current fiscal year, that they are going to be able to cover that with their existing budget. And so I thank the sponsor for that, and the chief of police for working with the legislature to increase this stipend for the reservists. I know that this has been an issue that has been repeatedly raised, and so thanks again to the sponsor for this bill, and I stand in support of raising the stipends. Sujus Massey.
Buen pavez, Senator Terlai. Senator Luis Munoz, you are recognized on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just have a question for the author, just to clarify that this is to increase it to 500 rather than adding on on top of the 250?
Sujus Massey, Senator Luis Munoz. Senator San Agustin, would you like to answer that question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. That's correct. It's to increase from 250 to 500, not add an additional 500.
You can go ahead and tell the, say that to the podium, sir.
Okay.
That, so it will...
It's to increase from 250 to 500, not to add 500 on top of the 250, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Senator San Agustin. Senator Luis...
I just wanted to clarify that. And then also, one more thing, Madam Speaker, I don't know if this is just a typo, but in the title, it says in public law 35-36, and then on page two, on line one, it says public law 36-35. So I don't know if that's just a typo that needs to be changed, if we can just acknowledge that and change it.
Thank you, Senator Luis. Senator San Agustin, would you like to yield?
Madam Speaker, if we can ask Legal to just adjust it, make the administrative corrections...
So you have a motion? Can you state the motion, sir?
If we can ask the legal to make the necessary...
Necessary corrections. On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. On the main motion, on the main motion, if, Senator Jim Moylan, I apologize, you are recognized at this time. I didn't see your hand.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm happy that the author introduced this bill. I'm happy to hear about public safety bills. I think this is very important, and with all these town hall meetings that I had, the fourth was just last night at MTM, and to say what was already spoken as well, more of the villagers want to see police officers on the beat in their village. They want to have them ready and able to go, and don't want to be able to have to call up and nobody responds. So we know manpower is the issue, and this would help. And I hope to see more bills about public safety as a priority for this body. So I'm happy for that. What I would like to mention is that on the budget side, I know we're all concerned, but we, you know, to take excess and from public safety measures, it's, that's disappointing. But at least we're moving forward with adding more reserves. But I'm just wondering, and I asked the author of the bill, you know, with the current amount of police reserves are out there, I really don't know how many police reserves we have. And I think we want to increase the amount of the stipend to, from 250 to 500, which is good, but will that really attract? If we have this one opportunity to increase the reservist force by increasing their stipend, is 500 enough? I'm not sure. The cost of uniforms, the cost of their handcuffs, everything that they had to provide for themselves, their boots and so forth, it's quite expensive. So if we really want to increase our reservist force, is 500 enough? And how much, how many police reserves do we currently have? If I can ask that to the author, please, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Senator San Agustin, would you like to yield to that question?
Madam Speaker, which one? It sounded had multiple questions. I just want to make sure we have some sequence.
I will have him restate the question again.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Moylan, just restate your question.
First question is, currently, the amount of police reserves.
Reserves. On that, on that question, Senator San Agustin, would you like to yield on the number of reservists right now?
Madam Speaker, I don't know exact number today, but the numbers have varied, and I'm going to try not to be too blunt, but the judiciary, the marshals, they've been exchanging reservists. When the police reserve sees there's an opportunity to go on duty with the court, they'll take that because it's $500 a month. Then when there's time, they'll come to the police department. This will bring parity, and then they'll just stay. I hate to say it that way, but that's what's been happening. What was the next question?
But you don't have the number, the number at this time?
No, at one point, they told me there was 20, and then it varied because of, based on...
Thank you. Thank you, Senator San Agustin. Senator Jim, does that suffice?
Yes, I appreciate that.
And your second question, sir?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Second question, on, for the police reservists, they had to put a lot of money into their uniforms. So $500, I'm not sure that would qualify for that time, and I know you're not going to buy $500 per month, but over a time period, you're spending a lot on your uniforms, and $500, if we have an idea what it costs to put a police reservist in their dress blues and so forth, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Senator. Senator San Agustin, would you like to yield to the second question about the cost of the uniforms?
Madam Speaker, my understanding, the police department doesn't provide uniform allowance. They get, if they get $500, every police reservist I spoke to said they're happy with that. It helps them pay for whatever they need. Okay, so if the, my colleagues want to increase, I'm open to that. And if they want to add the uniform allowance, I'm open to that. But let's just understand, this is what they've been asking for, was an increase to $500. And I think we need to just entertain one, then we'll go to the next one. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator San Agustin. Senator Jim, are you okay with that?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I hope my colleague and I may be one day future Guam Police Department reservists. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Jim Moylan. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else on the main motion? Hearing no one else. Senator Joseph Agustin, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just asked my colleagues to support Bill 216, and I ask that this bill be moved to the third reading file.
On that motion to move Bill Number 216-35COR to the voting, to the third reading voting file, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. We are now on Bill Number 249. Senator Telotatigui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move to reconsider the actions of the body and move Bill 181 as substituted to the, from the third reading file.
There has been a motion to reconsider the actions of the body. Is there an objection? There has been an objection. All those in favor, please signify.
Madam Speaker, I didn't hear an objection. Who objected?
Senator objected. There is a motion. Senator Telina Nelson, Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, can I get a quick recess?
Yes, yes, you can. One moment. We are in recess. One moment, we are in recess. on the motion to reconsider, for reconsideration. On the objection, there was an objection. Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I'm just looking for my notes. But, you know, I object to going back. I was very specific yesterday when I mentioned that we discussed it before and committed the whole. And many discussions been made in the months. I don't know how much more you need to discuss. The manamku are passing, the maamku are waiting. So my concern is I still object, and that's my issue.
This is non-debatable?
On the objection, there has been an objection. All those in support of the motion, I mean of the reconsideration motion, please signify by raising your hand. Motion fails. We are in Bill Number 216-35COR. Senator... I'm sorry, Bill 249-35COR. Senator Kelly Marsh Titunel, you are recognized.
Sisus Mas, Madam Speaker. I may, excuse me. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill Number 249-35COR as introduced on the third reading file, and I would like to discuss it.
Can you please read the title on the office of the legislation? Senator Marsh Titunel.
Certainly. Bill Number 249-35COR as introduced by Senators Kelly Marsh Titunel, Speaker Tina Rose Munoz Barnes, Amanda L. Shelton, Jose Pito Turlahi, Clinton E. Rigel, Joe S. Amanda L. Shelton, Jose Pito Turlahe, Clinton E. Rigel, Joe S. San Augustine. An Act to Add a New M to Section 85102 of Chapter 85, Title V, GCA, Relative to Designating the Council on the Arts and Humanities as the State Arts Agency for Guam. To add a new N to Section 851 of Chapter 8, Title 1, GCA, Relative to Defining the Term "Works of Art" in the Arts in Public Buildings Law. And to amend Section 852A 2(c) of Chapter 6, Title 1, GCA, Relative to Allowing the Use of Money Collected Therein for Travel to FestPAC.
Thank you, Senator Marsh Titunel. Do you still wish to proceed?
Hungin, before I proceed and have my opening statement, I do have a document here. It was meant to be distributed and part of the committee report, but if I could have it...
But, okay, so on the motion to place on third reading, so moved.
If I can have it, the motion, wait.
On the motion, please proceed.
Right, so I had said I moved to place Bill number 249-35 as introduced on the third reading file then to discuss it?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay, and then I read the title.
Yes, please proceed. Yes. Yes, and I understand you want to move documents into... Yes, please proceed.
Yes, so I have one testimony that was present at the public hearing, and so I want to distribute this and add it to today's record.
And can you just give me the date and who the letter, the testimony is from?
This was written November 28, 2018. The subject is in support of Bill 158-35, and it was written by Sandra Okada, Iseki Okada.
On that motion, are there any objections to append? No objections, motion carries. Senator Marsh Titunel, you're still recognized on the main motion.
And so just to clarify for those who are getting this, it does say 158. We have two bills regarding FestPAC, so it is meant to be, it was meant to be in support of both 158 and 249-35 in case there are any questions there.
Thank you. On that clarification on the motion, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Senator Titunel, you still have the floor.
For nearly 50 years, Guam has committed to consistently participate in FestPAC. Every four years, our local news, our Facebook pages, and Instagram accounts abound with visions of our local artists participating in FestPAC. It is then especially that we reconnect with the fact that we live in the Pacific among other like Pacific Island communities, and together, we lift each other up, we discuss ways to overcome modern challenges to our way of life, and find strength together in maintaining Pacific Island cultures and languages. For Guam, FestPAC has been additionally important. It's been a main drive in the revitalization and the recapturing of tomorrow cultural skills and traditions long lost to the forces of missionization, colonization, and modernization. Yet after 50 years, we continue to be challenged in readying ourselves for participation. This bill seeks to rectify some of that. Some may ask why, when there are so many other concerns happening on island, we are considering this bill. Well, we have financial and other penalties looming if we don't allow a funding source in the next few days. If we act now, we are potentially saving tens of thousands of dollars, and it would be fiscally irresponsible to accrue expensive penalties that can easily be avoided. But perhaps more importantly, it is precisely at times like these that we need to make sure that we as a community are not pushing art and cultural and other such programs aside. To be sure, we need to address issues through strengthening our police, our Department of Corrections, our Homeland Security Office, and improving their efficacy. But as a social scientist, I would be negligent if I didn't remind us that our youth and others in our community, they need something to aspire to, something that gives their life meaning, something that provides a sense of cultural identity, and something to have pride in. The Pincs and FestPAC become Guam's cultural warriors that fight against our social issues, not only directly, but they inspire others as well through their cultural practices and arts. Just a couple of weeks ago, at an association of Pacific Island legislators at a meeting, Hawaii, the Northern Mariana Islands, Palau, and other fellow islands unanimously agreed that the government must support indigenous Pacific Island arts and cultural programs through the toughest of financial and other challenges, because they too know the benefits these programs bring to the people. Further, testimony by Dr. Judy Flores, Gehalo Hope Cristobal, and others specifically noted that even in fiscally hard times, when tough decisions need to be made, they have seen the multiplier effects of participating in FestPAC to the Tomorrow People, to the Tomorrow Culture and the Arts, and the larger art and other community, and stated their strong support of using Kaha monies for FestPAC, as has occurred in the past, actually. Each government has a moral obligation to ensure the survival of indigenous peoples and their culture, arts, and language. The Tomorrow People have survived the medieval missionization and 300 years of colonization. We cannot fail at our obligation. Let us leaders be known for ensuring the survival of Tomorrow People and their traditional knowledge and cultural expressions, not for being the final stumbling block in their fight for continued existence. For almost four decades, Kaha has successfully organized our participation in FestPAC. However, since that role is not recognized in law, it falls prey to waiting upon several steps that can take, as we have seen this time around, years before Kaha is recognized and can actually begin its work. Ideally, Kaha would have begun organizing this FestPAC perhaps two or three or even more years ago. Bill 249 resolves that by legally recognizing them as the lead agency for our FestPAC participation, which allows them to begin their work as they see fit. Bill 249 also clarifies the various forms of art that the percent for the arts supports. Many misrepresent or misinterpret the program to only support static tangible art like you would see in a gallery. However, it was always meant to support fostering of culture and the arts, including traditional performing and other arts. For decades, percent for the arts monies have been used for various art programs. With FestPAC being the largest cultural and traditional arts program, it only makes sense to allow Kaha the flexibility to use some of the percent for the arts monies to ensure the success of our participation in FestPAC, which has been done through legislation in the past. However, this flexibility should not be considered a permanent funding source. This is an unusual boon time, whereas most years, Kaha doesn't necessarily receive percent for the arts monies. And I do have an amendment to this effect. All FestPAC expenses will be reviewed and vetted by Kaha board members, most of whom are artists themselves, many of whom are masters of their craft, having been officially recognized as such. The others that are there on the board, they are deeply committed to their responsibilities, not only FestPAC, but all local artists here and all local art programs here. They wrote a letter of support and read it as testimony at the public hearing. This bill sets up the infrastructure to support Kaha in its continued success in planning for our participation in FestPAC. I look forward to our discussion, and I ask for your support on this measure beyond just those statements of support of the concept of FestPAC, but actually in rolling up your sleeves and doing the work necessary to make it happen. Many have already mentioned to me their demoralization by the lack of real support from the legislature. So this is the time for us to put ourselves behind what we've been saying in our support. Sena Maasi, Madam Speaker.
Bueno, President, Senator Titunel. Did you have an amendment, or would you like to proceed at closing? on the motion to reconsider, for reconsideration on the objection. There was an objection, Senator San Augustine.
I do have an amendment. The amendment is introduced by both myself and Sabina, Senator Sabina Perez.
You are recognized. Is that amendment being passed out? Well, we'll take a moment to recess.
Is that amendment being passed out? Well, we'll take a moment to recess.
Senator Kelly. Ymina Trentai Cinco Nales Latuneguan is back from recess. Does everybody have a copy of Senator Marsh Titian's amendment? It's been passed out. Senator Marsh Titiano, I will allow you to speak on the floor as the majority leader. You're recognized.
Sizou Smasi, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate a lot of the collaboration that it took to make sure that this was just one amendment and not three or an amendment to the amendment sort of situation. So here, this amendment is by myself, Senator Sabina Perez, and then we also had input from the vice speaker, which we very much appreciate. So it is for line 11, page 3, to amend section 852A to C of the bill to read, 13th Pacific, excuse me, 13th Festival of Pacific Arts FestPAC. The money collected pursuant to this section may be used to pay for airfare expenses for Guam delegates to FestPAC, shipping expenses for pertinent cargo, and other logistical support approved by resolution by the governing board of Kaha. In compliance with 1GCA 852G2, the Kaha director report shall include an expenditure report of funds spent pursuant to this section. So with this, we are limiting it to the 13th Festival of Pacific Arts. As we said, the funding is not a consistent source of funding from the percent for the arts. We're always grateful when we receive it, but it is not consistent from year to year. And so this binds it to the 13th, and we are hoping that we can tackle this issue as we move forward in other ways. And then also, we are just additionally putting in those processes, that anything has to be reviewed, it has to be vetted by those artists, by those masters, by those other dedicated people serving on the governing board. And then finally, for full transparency, there's already an expenditure report required each quarter for percent for the arts money. This makes it very clear that there is that expenditure report. It is going to be in line with what's already in place, and it's going to be pursuant to this section so that it will be specifically detailing the expenses of FestPAC.
Thank you, Senator Marsh Titiano. Senator Marsh Titiano, can we just change that motion from line 11 to put it on line 9? If you can just make sure.
So if we can have the motion.
We are going to start on line.
To make that line 9, page 3.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, anyone wishing to speak? Are there any objections? Hearing none. Senator Mary Torres, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to rise in full support of this amendment. I think this is one good measure that limits it to just this upcoming FestPAC, and it also requires an expenditure report by the Kaha directors. You know, the importance of attending FestPAC, I think, cannot be understated, especially since Guam relies so heavily on tourism and its identity as a cultural, a unique cultural destination, that we always have a presence, particularly in what is really the Olympics of arts in the Pacific area. And although there is some concern in the public about how we most, we use our monies in the most beneficial way, I think that no one can underscore the importance of perpetuating and building up that cultural identity, because that is, after all, what we rely on as our number-two industry on Guam, that, you know, not only supports every other thing that we do, but more than anything, it establishes who we are as a destination and establishes a sense of place. So participating in FestPAC is absolutely important, and I just want to commend the author of this bill and of this, the authors of this amendment for recognizing that we must do something to ensure that Guam is present at FestPAC, the 13th FestPAC in Honolulu. Sizou Smasi.
When previous to Senator Torres. Anyone else on the amendment? Senator Therese Turlai, you're recognized on the Kelly Marsh Titiano amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I support this amendment, which will limit the, the statute currently prohibits travel under this fund, but this amendment will allow travel specifically for the 13th Festival of Pacific Arts only. I would just make an amendment to that amendment, and the second reference to FestPAC on the second line of this amendment, that we also add 13th Festival of Pacific Arts there instead of just FestPAC, because this, this sentence says the money collected pursuant to this section may be used to pay for airfare expenses for Guam delegates to FestPAC. That, again, kind of opens it up for all FestPACs. And so just to limit it to the 13th.
Thank you. There has been an amendment to the amendment to take the word FestPAC on the second line and put 13th Festival of Pacific Arts slash FestPAC. Senator Mary Torres, you're recognized on that. Senator Turlai, he amendment to the amendment.
I just want to point out, Madam Speaker, that FestPAC is defined in parentheses at the first line to mean the 13th Festival of Pacific Arts. So I don't, I believe you either repeat 13th Festival of the Pacific Arts and remove the parenthetic FestPAC, or, I mean, it's one and the same, and it's generally the way it's presented. So I would think that FestPAC means exactly how it's been defined in the previous sentence, so perhaps no need. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Senator Torres. And unless there's a motion for withdrawal, the amendment, the Senator Turlai amendment is still on the floor. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Senator Torres, is that an objection to the Senator Turlai amendment? If, if not, Senator Turlai, would you like to close on your? Is there an objection to the Senator Therese Turlai amendment? Is there an objection? Senator, Senator Joseph Augustine, maybe to allow legal.
Yes, I was going to ask you that.
Please.
We would, should refer to legal. Let her make the appropriate correction that needs to be done.
Okay. On the motion to withdraw Senator Therese Turlai's amendment, but allow, on the motion to withdraw Senator Therese's amendment, hearing no objection, motion for, Senator Sin Augustine's amendment to the, the motion right now is to have legal, make the necessary technical changes to allow for them. Are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. We are still on Senator Marsh Titiano and Senator Sabina's amendment. Are there any other colleagues wishing to speak on it? If not, Senator Marsh Titiano, would you like to close?
Sina Massey, Madam Speaker. So I think the amendment speaks for itself, and I appreciate those that stood in support of it, and, as I said before, those that collaborated to strengthen it, Sizou Smasi.
Thank you, Senator Marsh Titiano. On the Marsh Titiano amendment, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. We're still on the main motion. Senator Tidaway, you are recognized.
Thank you, Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on Bill 249. And, I mean, we all remember FestPAC not too long ago, how exciting it was for everyone. In fact, I have two sisters who live in Hawaii right now who are so excited. One has actually decided to volunteer at the, for the festivities. And I had one sister who flew back to Guam just to be able to, you know, participate in FestPAC and its festivities that happen. So this is very exciting, and I've always said that, you know, I support the arts and worked with them, and a lot of the questions that I asked during the public hearing on this bill, things came to light that I didn't really realize, and a bill that was introduced by former Senator Alin Yamashita, that created this fund to put funding into a building account that would support the artists on Guam. And I like the idea how we've extended that, not just to the artisans, but also to the, for dance, to ensure that the dancers are included too. I definitely support that. But while during the public hearing, though, there was a concern I had, because in the law, it required for rules and regulations. And this law has been into place for quite a bit of time, and still to this time, they really don't have the rules and regulations that are supposed to be updated or even promulgated yet. So it was very concerning. But during the public hearing, they said that they're in the draft form, they're almost ready to get that, those rules and regulations together. So that was one of the concerns I had, because we all know that with the funds for this particular account is for, to support the arts. This is not coming from. This is not coming from the general fund, this is coming from this fund. A fund, by the way, that was mentioned during the public hearing is not always the same amount every year, it all depends. In fact, right now, they said they had $712,000 in the fund currently, and they anticipate another $500,000 going into the account. But like my Auntie Judy Flores said, that this is kind of rare, to have this much money there. So I think if that's the case, we have to be very cautious of going in there and raiding the whole entire thing and not leaving anything for what's happening on Guam, to promote our culture, to teach our children about our culture. So, Madam Speaker, so what I have proffered here is to provide some kind of balance. Now, I've spoken to previous directors and people who've attended or was part of FestPAC in the past, and I asked the question, how much was FestPAC given in prior FestPACs? Before the Solomon FestPAC, because that was a bit unusual. That was quite a bit of money used for that, but they went on a fact finding that it cost $100,000, and then additionally, it was kind of inflated, and, but prior to that, how much money was spent on FestPAC? And they had mentioned to me that it was $200,000 in previous years, 2008, going further back, 200,000. So according to those numbers that I received from somebody who is, who's been dealing with FestPAC for quite a bit of time, who has actually provided testimony, and if you read the committee report, you'll see this information was also brought to, brought up during the public hearing on the committee report. But knowing that inflation, you know, cost of living has gone up, that I think this number should be just a little bit increased, based on today's times. So, Madam Speaker, I have looked at also the budget that was provided during the hearing, and it says here that the working budget as of November 27, 2019, not too far along, has a total of 310,127. But on the fundraising perspective, they anticipate to raise, and this is a good effort. I mean, I'm sure all those other nonprofit organizations that are looking or seeking funding from this government, you know, they do their due diligence and try to do their own fundraising. And they have it clocked in at $61,500. And that's good effort, because, Madam Chair, in the past, artists were required to fork out some money ahead of time. I think it was 100,000, I mean, not 100,000, about $100 or something, I think it was about $100. Only, not because, you know, they, they wanted these guys to, needed the money at that time because they were all going to fundraise together, but the fact was that they needed to make sure these artists were going to attend FestPAC. A lot of time went into this. So if you have 100 that are only required to go to FestPAC, and then at the last minute, you have a couple people who want to bail out, it's hard to replace them, it's difficult. So this money was to ensure that they're, they're going to go to FestPAC. In other words, they put their money on it.
Point of inquiry. I'd like to, I'd like to ask a question regarding this information.
I'm in the middle of discussion.
Senator Marsh Titianu, please. Senator Titigui has the floor. I will-
Okay, but I do have, I do have some points of inquiry about the information being-
You have a point of information?
Yes, so I have a point of inquiry or point of information that I'm seeking.
You know, Madam Speaker, I will be happy to answer the questions after I'm done.
Senator-
So I can wait until after she's done, but, but I do have, I want to make sure that
Senator Marsh Titianu, you do have a point of inquiry and information. I'm going to ask, is this directly related to the presentation? Because we, I would yield to let Senator Titigui finish if you would like to wait.
Question I left off. So that, that this fundraising effort of 61,500 was all incorporated in that? So that being said, Madam Speaker, and based on, if you, before I go into that, so if you take 310,127, and then you minus 61,500, you now come up with 248,627. So, Madam Chair, I have an amendment here that would, it's on page three, line five. To amend, it's amend section four of the bill to read, section four, 852A2C of chapter eight, title one, Guam Code Annotated, is amended to read, and this is C, letter C, "No money collected pursuant to this section shall be used for travel unless the travel is exclusively for Guam's participation and representation in the FestPAC, in the Festival of the Pacific Arts FestPAC. No more," and this is where my amendment comes in, "no more than 250,000 of the proceeds collected pursuant to this section may be used for the Guam's participation, representation in the Festival of the Pacific Arts 2020, and in subsequent FestPACs to pay for airfare expenses for Guam's delegation to FestPAC, shipping expenses for pertinent cargo and other logistics supports as deemed necessary by the Governing Board of Kaha." So considering inflation, considering the budget that was presented to us, the efforts that are made by this group in trying to raise some money is commendable. So even though it is a little, you know, shy of 248,000, I think just to round it out at 250, would be, would be a great start to starting. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and address Senator Marsh Titianu's question on the point of inquiry. She did have a question on the floor as it relates to the debate going. I will allow her to state her point of inquiry, so to acquire the good senator to respond. Please state your question.
Signum Asi, I have a couple of questions.
No, just state the point of inquiry, please.
Yes, the point of inquiry. So my information documents 2008 as 250,000, or inquire where this came from, this $200,000 for 200, it's a point of inquiry.
I-
Oh, I said, my, my, my looking into this matter and going through the years, 2008, we found that it was $250,000. So I'd like to know where this $200,000 figure comes from, if I can see a document. It's not what was testified in the, during the public hearing either.
There is a point of inquiry. I'm going to go ahead and take a moment's recess.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, I stand corrected. I received my information from people who used to work at Kaha, giving me those numbers, and then during the time, talking with the individuals at the public hearing. But I think the real big difference is that in, it was 250, because we are lucky to have Kaha, the acting director here, to provide information that it was 250, but the difference was that there were 150 participants that attended FestPAC in those years when the amount was 250. This year, we only have 100 participants.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Marsh Titianu, does that-
Senador Marsh Titino, ¿eso es suficiente?
Sí, Madam Presidente. Es la información que tenía todo el tiempo. Fue información que estaba siendo compartida antes, aunque habíamos hablado de ello previamente. Y con 150, usted sabe, los costos no son por individual. Hay costos mayores por producción, por desempeño, por exhibido. Así que, pero es bueno escuchar que el 100 es un buen número donde estamos ahora. Tengo dos puntos de inquiri.
Por favor, state su punto de inquiri uno a la vez.
Uno es que me gustaría entender dónde viene este $100 por persona, por delegado, específicamente debido a la no atenencia. Siento que eso está malintencionando el proceso entero y los artistas involucrados. Mi comprensión y mi pregunta de la gente es que nunca hemos oído algo así. Y así me gustaría saber dónde viene esta información o la información equivocada.
Gracias. Senador Titigui, ¿te gustaría darle?
Sí, me gustaría. La cantidad, creo que fue, como dije anteriormente, creo que fue 100, podría ser $50, pero me dijo un anterior director, no este director, pero un anterior director, que en el pasado, que estos artistas tenían que ponerle algo de dinero. No estoy muy segura de la cantidad. Creo que era, quiero ver $100 en ese momento.
Gracias, senador Titigui. Senador Titino, ¿eso es suficiente?
Bueno, continuaré haciendo mi propia investigación. Así que en este punto es escena de ambos nuestros partes. Para la inflación, me gustaría entender el calculador de inflación, ese cálculo que se utilizó para traer las cosas en tiempos modernos. 2008 fue hace mucho tiempo. Estamos hablando de, a la hora de que el Festpac se vuelva, 12 años atrás. Así que me gustaría hacer un montón de cosas que podrían haber pagado en 2008 que podría tener ese mismo costo hoy. Así que, de todos modos, me gustaría saber cuál era el cálculo para la inflación para ajustar entre 2008 y 2020 y que la cantidad permanezca exactamente igual.
Gracias, gracias, senador Titino. Senador Titigui, ¿te gustaría darle?
Absolutamente. Así que, Madam Presidente, como dije, estaba llegando a la premisa de que era $200,000 y considerando desde ese momento hasta hoy, pensé que el 50,000 adicional bastaría solo porque eso es lo que tenían en su presupuesto. Tienen $248,627 para su presupuesto para el Festpac. Así que así es como me acabo de sumar, añadiéndolo a 250. Pero, Madam Presidente, si estás hablando de inflación, si estuviéramos gastando 250 en 2008 por 150, quiero decir, por 150 participantes y ahora estamos aquí hoy solo gastando por 100 participantes.
Gracias, senador Titigui. Senador Titino, ¿eso es suficiente, su inquiri?
Bueno, me gustaría señalar que es un nivel débil de cálculo. Hay varios calculadores de inflación online, que yo me lo falté de conocer. $250,000 en enero se calcula a cerca de $305,000 este año, ni siquiera contando el año siguiente. Y, nuevamente, reiterar que el 100 es muy desrepresentativo porque estamos tratando con grupos de desempeño que necesitan propósitos de escenario y cosas mayores. Así que no es un costo por individual y es desinformatorio seguir intentando perpetuar eso.
Gracias.
Así que ese es el fin de mis inquiri, pero me objeto al amendment. Hemos estado trabajando increíblemente duro para mantener los costos bajos y así es como estamos logrando este menor cantidad.
Por favor, proceda.
Okay, y así con esto, me objeto. Ya hemos puesto dos elementos para la vetación. Tenemos una junta, no solo compuesta de alguien, sino una junta compuesta de maestros, personas que han sido reconocidas como habían desarrollado algunos de esas industrias culturales y resucitaron ellos mismos de donde habían sido mucho perdidos. Y han pasado por un proceso de vetación por sí mismos para ser reconocidos como maestros. Estos maestros forman parte de la composición de esa junta. Y así tienes maestros de las artes, tienes otros artistas que están allí que han sido artistas durante 30, 40, 50 años o así. Luego tienes otros miembros dedicados. Así que hay ese proceso de vetación. Tienen que revisar, tienen que vetar, tienen que aprobar públicamente. Sus reuniones tienen que ir online en OPA. Tienen que dar sus minutos escritos. Así que estas reuniones, ley gubernamental abierta, se vetan por sí mismas, tanto por la comunidad, por los artistas y por la legislatura. Y luego ya hay una obligación de reporte financiero que está aquí. Así que no sabemos absolutamente cuál será todo el costo. Y odio impidir cualquier parte de ello al poner un límite, solo para averiguar. Todos sabemos que el costo de vivir en Guam es caro. Todos sabemos que nuestro envío de cargos es más costoso que otros lugares. Todos sabemos que pagamos tasas de viajes aéreos más altas que muchos otros. Así que poner límites cuando tenemos todas estas condiciones y cuando estamos trabajando realmente detrás del reloj, estamos un año o dos detrás del reloj y estamos tratando desesperadamente para financiar, estamos tratando desesperadamente para mantener nuestros costos bajos, estamos tratando desesperadamente para ser tan diligentes y tener tantos chequeos y balances en proceso. Creo que también merecemos un poco de flexibilidad que solo no sabemos cuál va a ser el próximo seis meses para nosotros, confiar en ellos con esa flexibilidad. Sí, Madam Presidente, por permitirme decir mi objeción.
Gracias, senador Marsh Titino. ¿Alguien más sobre el amendment Titigui? ¿Alguien más que quiera hablar? Senador Sabina Flores Pérez, usted es reconocido en el amendment.
Gracias, Madam Presidente. Solo un punto de información, un punto de inquiri. ¿Podría el autor del proyecto en sí, informar sobre las finanzas de Kaha en relación a tal vez su plan estratégico en apoyar las artes localmente en addition a financiar el Festpac?
Gracias. Senador Titigui, ¿te gustaría darle?
Lo que fue para el autor.
El autor.
Del proyecto en sí. Sí. Esto está relacionado con el amendment, así que...
Así que la pregunta es, el estratégico...
Lo siento.
Por favor, state su pregunta para el autor.
Sí, una pregunta para el autor del proyecto en sí. Si puede proporcionar información sobre el presupuesto de Kaha en relación a sus otras deberes en apoyar las artes localmente.
Okay, vamos a tomar un momento de recesión sobre ese inquiri. Ymina Trenta cinco, la lista de Turen Guahan es de vuelta de recesión. Senador Marsh Titino, ¿te gustaría darle a senador Sabina Pérez su inquiri?
Hunden, yo me gustaría darle. Así que con eso, es importante señalar, y estoy contenta por el inquiri, es importante señalar, como se mencionó antes, hay aproximadamente $712,000 que está en este fondo, este fondo para las artes artesanas en este momento. Esto significa que incluso si la cantidad que está en el presupuesto para el Festival de Artes Pacificas, si eso se usa, todavía deja al menos 400, si no $450,000 para usar para programación local. Y luego muy pronto esperamos otro $500,000. Así que nuestra programación local aquí en la isla tendrá algo como $900,000 a $950,000 para usar localmente, y creo que esa fue la pregunta que se estaba preguntando.
Gracias, senador Marsh Titino.
Punto de información, Madam Presidente. Madam Presidente, solo para reiterar que la financiación que está ahí ahora mismo siempre ha sido mencionada, que no siempre es consistente, que es raro tener tanto dinero. Y estos programas también, Madam Presidente, es un punto de información, programas apprentices, exhibidos, ferias artísticas locales, banqueros con muchas ventajas, construcción para un nuevo mantenimiento y centro cultural-cívico. Eso es lo que este dinero es para, Madam Presidente.
Senador Titigui, gracias. Senador Sabina Pérez.
Gracias, Madam Presidente, y gracias al autor del proyecto por responder la pregunta. Sí, eso satisfaz mi pregunta. Pero solo me gustaría decir que apoyo al Festpac y he oído muchas anécdotas que incendiaron su conexión cultural y identidad cultural. Y es importante invertir en nuestra comunidad de esa manera. Pero también es importante tener duele diligencia porque Kaha tiene otras necesidades y es importante equilibrar esas necesidades si queremos sustener ese crecimiento cultural. Creo que es importante equilibrar el crecimiento localmente así como apoyar la representación en el Festpac.
Gracias, senador Pérez. En el amendment Titigui, ¿alguien más en el movimiento? Senador Teresa Lay, usted es reconocido en el movimiento Titigui.
Gracias, Madam Presidente. Rodo en apoyo a la medida de este amendment, que es poner un límite en la cantidad de procedimientos que pueden ser usados para el 13 Festival de Artes Pacificas, el Festpac 2020. Y eso es, estoy en favor de un límite porque la cantidad que está en los fondos que estamos autorizando para que se use ahora mismo es un total de $712,000, mucho más que cualquier cantidad que haya sido usada, y con menos delegados. Y no creo que sea razonable que estemos intentando abrirlo para uso del total entero. Y Kaha nos ha pedido limitar esto. Y así, testificaron en la audiencia que tenían $712,000 en el fondo. Esperaban más de $500,000 de GRMC, creo. Y 400 de estos $712,000 creo que han venido también de GRMC, al menos. Pensé que originalmente estaban pidiendo, pero 250 es razonable si eso es consistente con otras delegaciones, Madam Presidente. El presupuesto que fue submetido en la audiencia pública, total es 310,000 y estaban estimados que iban a aumentar 61,000 de eso, lo que equivale a aproximadamente $250,000 entonces, si nos subrayamos a 310. Pero más importante, incluso si no aumentaron ninguno de los fondos mismos, nos preguntaron en la audiencia pública respecto a ciertos gastos. Así que el viaje por viaje aéreo, tú sabes, no puedes cambiar eso. Así que estaban, en realidad, es mi comprensión de por qué este proyecto es urgente hoy. Es porque estamos tratando de bloquear el viaje aéreo ahora mismo a un precio cierto en lugar de un precio más alto. Y eso es razonable, Madam Presidente, tratar de bloquearlo a un precio menor. Y el resto de los gastos en el presupuesto fueron la seguridad para el viaje. El personal de Kaha, y pasamos por esto en la audiencia pública, por qué era necesario que ciertos personal de Kaha asistieran, no solo los artistas, pero necesitábamos personal de Kaha. Y así sus comidas, comidas y alojamientos también están en el presupuesto. Había transporte para, nuevamente, estos personal de Kaha, dos camiones porque eran los que iban a mover los supplies. Todo lo que los artistas iban a necesitar para llegar a los venues que iban a ser configurados. Este, había un $6,000 estimado para eso. Había uniformes, diseño, diseño y compra $10,000, t-shirts oficiales $5,000, y luego grupos de actuación con accesorios $15,000. Y eso parece, usted sabe, eso es alto y no incluye el costo para los otros artistas, pero para los grupos de actuación solo $15,000 para, dice, creo que son los vestidos. Hay una recepción VIP de 10,000, que creo que escuché en la audiencia pública o después, que eso podría no ser necesario ya que no somos el país de origen. Eso es $10,000. Delegación da, es una cantidad muy pequeña, $1,000. Requisitos de país de origen, $1,000. Demonstraciones culinarias, $1,000. Costos de envío a $15,000. Y hubo testimonio en la audiencia que esto, estaban tratando de negociar... Esa es una de las cosas que estaban tratando de negociar. Estaba esperando que obtuvieramos una actualización hoy, si eso es, usted sabe, si estaban recibiendo contribuciones por envío, porque es mi comprensión de que... Que hemos sido muy bendecidos en Guam por recibir donaciones en este sentido. Y sé que hemos estado trabajando muy duro porque este año el tema es navegación y quieren traer los canoes allá afuera por barco. Así que en este momento sigue listado como $15,000, pero es mi comprensión. No sé, quería obtener una actualización de eso. Y luego, yo había preguntado en la audiencia sobre la producción técnica de un video, uno comercial, una vignette, un video de live de la presentación, desempeño, $36,000. Es por mucho la mayor cantidad aquí, excepto por el viaje aéreo. Y así, había preguntado si eran capaces de trabajar con PBS o otras entidades en Guam para reducir este costo. Y dijeron que estaban trabajando en eso en ese momento. Así que, así que lo presupuestaron por 310, gastos de, gastos de 310. Pero si quitas algunas de esas gastos que dijeron que podrían cubrir either aumentando dinero o obteniendo donaciones de envío y trabajando con PBS en la producción técnica, tal vez vamos a terminar, usted sabe, de 310 muy cerca a 250. Pero no me importaría darles el 310. Pero el punto es, Madam Presidente, es que, es que no creo que sea razonable para nosotros abrirlo para casi un millón de dólares para esto. Y totalmente apoyo el Festpac. Creo que brinda beneficios tremendos para Guam, para los participantes y para crecer estas artes, para perpetuarlas. Sin embargo, sí, simplemente creo, creo que es muy razonable y todo el mundo espera un límite. El anterior proyecto fue, fue limitado y sí, no creo que nadie esté esperando gastar $712,000, Madam Presidente. Así que el límite parece muy razonable para mí. Gracias, Madam Presidente.
Gracias, senador Titigui. ¿Alguien más en el...? Senador San Agustin, usted es reconocido en el amendment Titigui.
Sí, Madam Presidente. Solo estoy tratando de entender, estamos llevando a cabo un amendment después de pasar un amendment que dice, "aprobado por la resolución del gobierno". Pero vamos a ir adelante y decir al gobierno de este amendment no más de 250,000. Y al mismo tiempo, están diciendo que aumentaron aproximadamente 60,000 para traer... ¿Por qué estamos incluso cuestionando el board? ¿Por qué no solo...? Realmente estamos de acuerdo que el gobierno va a decidir cuánto gastar. No vamos a micromeditar y decirles, no gasten más de 250. ¿Qué pasa si de repente el costo aumenta? Luego vamos a volver y vamos a decir, usted sabe qué, no pensé que iba a aumentar. Bueno, usted sabe qué, se debería permitir al board decidir. Y deberíamos exigir que cumplan su responsabilidad fiduciaria de no gastar más que necesitan gastar. Así que yo rido en objeción a esto porque ya pasamos un amendment. No necesitamos pasar un amendment y luego pegarle las manos de nuevo. Gracias.
Gracias, senador San Agustin. ¿Alguien más en el amendment? Si no, senador Titigui, usted puede cerrar.
Gracias, Presidente, por la oportunidad de cerrar sobre este amendment. Un amendment que no permite un cheque空格号 a nadie. Es nuestro deber y nuestra responsabilidad en esta legislatura poner estos límites, asegurar que no hay excesivo gasto hasta que más tarde obtenemos algo en la noticia diciendo que este board o ese board gastó demasiado y por qué la legislatura no hizo nada al respecto. do anything about it? That's what our job is here, to protect these funds, and to ensure that there is no overspending of anything. The amount of money that came in here, Madam, well, let's go back to the vetting part. The board to decide, is it a vote? Or do they just vet, vet it out? Who makes that decision? The board by a vote? There's nothing in the rules and regulations that say they have to have a vote of seven or a vote of five. Now, Madam Speaker, this amount here, 250,000, for 100 participants, 100 participants, compared to 250, when there was 150 participants. There's been an increase to that amount. I really appreciate the fact that my colleagues brought up the fact that this funding was for other things Kaha needs. Now, I don't know if you recall, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, but I remember when Kaha was tossed from one building to another building to another building, trying to find a home. This funding, too, also provides for the opportunity for them to build a cultural center here on our island, here where we can teach our children the history of Guam, teach our children the culture, teach our children how to dance, the art, teach them to draw drawings of ancient Chamorah villages, everything under the sky, here on Guam. That's what we're here doing today, is just protecting that, to ensure that there's still money left over to promote our culture here at home and teach our children. So, vetting, that's it, just vetting? This should not be allowing the board to have an open book, an open checkbook, and writing any amount they want. This puts a cap on a limit on how much they can spend, and encourage them to do fundraising. As well as, not the previous, but the previous speaker after that, talked about all these expenses that incorporated here. $36,000 for technical production. That's quite a bit of money. One of the questions I asked, too, was, have you approached Matson for shipping? We're working on that. Well, have you approached United as well? Well, it's obvious that they have been approached Matson's. But the biggest thing is, have they approached GVB, Guam Visitors Bureau? I asked them that during the public hearing. Did they get any funding from GVB? As far as I know, they didn't. So, if there's any concern about whether they don't make, that 250,000 might not be enough, well, there's GVB. And I'm sure that this governor is going to ensure that our delegation goes and represents in Hawaii. And if there's any funding needing, well, I'm pretty sure it's just a phone call to certain agencies, like GVB, that promotes our culture, promotes Guam. That's the best place for it. But it's a responsibility of this body to ensure that there's a cap on it, so that there is no overspending, that there's not people going into the cookie jar, taking more than they should. We've done that many times over in this legislature. There has been caps. We're not tying individuals' hands here. We're just putting a limit. Thank you, Madam Chair, Speaker.
Thank you. State your point of inquiry, Senator Taitegui.
Sisus Massey, the point of inquiry, so, there was mention, and, again, this misrepresentation, as if the board is not comprised of masters who are extremely dedicated, and if it's going, as if it's going to be jungle rules during the board. So, I'd like to know if the author of the amendment read the previous amendment that was passed, that said that the, these expenses are going to be approved by a resolution by the governing board of Kaha.
We're going to take a moment's recess. Yvina Trenta-Fincon and Leslet Toon-Guahan's back from recess. Senator Taitegui, would you like to yield to the question? Senator, Senator Taitegui, the author of the amendment will not respond, will not respond. So, do you have another point of inquiry?
Not at this time.
Thank you. There has been an objection on the floor. All those in support of the Senator Taitegui amendment, please signify by raising your Motion fails. Anyone else on the main motion? Senator Louise Munya, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to be clear, I just, I would just want to state that I fully support the arts and all of our artists in all forms. I know that FestPAC is like the Olympics for our arts, and it's highlighted every four years. I am a former, and hopefully considered a lifetime member of Taototano under the direction of Frank Ribon. And I was active with the group in the 90s, and FestPAC was one of the biggest deals, aside from our nightly performances, to prepare and present our uniqueness of our culture, not just to the region, but also the entire world watching. And we had an issue of how this bill was placed on our session's agenda. In 2016, the last administration, unfortunately, was scrutinized and criticized from all angles, and I stood by them because of my love for the arts. For the record, again, I stand behind our artists and their passion for the arts, then, and now, and always. And I humbly ask the author if she would so kindly add me as a co-sponsor for this bill.
Sisus Massey. Senator Munya, on that motion, are there any, on that motion, are there any objections? Hearing not. Motion carries. Anyone else on the main motion? Senator Lee, you are recognized. We're going to have a moment's recess. 35th Guam legislatures back from recess. Senator Lee, I will recognize you.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, and thank you for granting that brief recess. I would like to ask a question of the bill's author, if she would yield.
Thank you. Please state your question.
Madam Speaker, on section four of the bill, which begins line five, page three, it does two important things in my mind. So, first, it doesn't prescribe a ceiling on funding that can be used for FestPAC. And I know we were discussing that in a previous amendment. And second, it grants flexibility for the Kaha board to authorize spending beyond purchasing plane tickets and paying to ship the necessary items and supplies to Hawaii for the 13th FestPAC. I'm particularly referencing the language that begins on line 11 of page three, which reads in part that the Kaha board may approve spending for, quote, "other logistical support as deemed necessary." And my question for the author, Madam Speaker, is, can she define, perhaps by giving some examples, of what is and what is not covered under other logistical support?
Senator, if I may, just to note for the record, on that line 11, that deemed necessary, I think, was deleted on a previous...
I apologize. As authorized by resolution, I think, as approved by resolution by the governing board of Kaha.
Right.
But the language still exists prior to that amendment, other logistical support. So, I just wanted to get a little bit of clarification on what that might mean.
Thank you, Senator Lee. Senator Taitegui, would you wish to yield to that?
So, there's been quite a bit of communication back and forth with Hawaii. And with that, the last of the information that we've heard is that it's gone back and forth, whether Kaha staff are delegates or not delegates. So, at this point, the Kaha staff are not delegates, which is good news for us, because that allows a couple more artists to be able to be considered as delegates. With that, so, with logistics, those staff by Kaha are very, very important. They said that, basically, they're running to address the needs of 100 individuals from the crack of dawn till way late in the evening, and perhaps actually up until almost the crack of dawn itself. So, there are all things, kinds of things that can happen. We have culinary events that are going on, and somebody needs to be buying the supplies for the culinary events. They need to be overseeing that things are brought from the shipping yard, and then indeed make it to the areas to be set up. So, even if some of the shipping will be donated, there's going to be that heavy cost of getting the items from the shipping yard to the event avenue. But they would set up those supplies, they would make sure that everything beforehand, during, and after is all accounted for, everything is well taken care of. They provide water, they provide ice. I think I mentioned medical attention, if there's any medical attention, they would make sure to either get the medical supplies needed, or get that person or persons to the medical facilities. So, it's a whole slew of variety of things that they are on call for. And I thank the senator for the question.
Senator Lee, does that suffice?
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, I thank you, and I thank the retiring speaker for the clarification. It's also my understanding that the FestPAC artists and the FestPAC group is working with a draft budget, or it's a working, fluid budget. And I understand that as we get closer to the event, a lot of those projected costs will turn into actual costs. And it's my hope that with fundraising and with some of our local business supporters stepping up to the plate to assist us in this regard, we'll be able to bring that projected budget amount down. And so, we'll be able to, it'll just be less, we'll have to spend less with regard to all of these expenses, airfare, shipping, other logistical support. I am potentially working on another amendment, Madam Speaker, but I'm just going to, based on her response, I'm going to take a moment and craft that. So, if you'd like to go to somebody else, that's fine.
I appreciate it, Senator Bisko Lee. I will proceed next on that. It's Legislative Secretary Shelton, you're recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. And I rise in support of Bill 249. And as has been mentioned here on the floor by the prime sponsor of the bill and our colleagues, we know that FestPAC is very fresh in our minds from having hosted it just a couple of years ago. And the FestPAC that we experienced here, and the FestPACs throughout our region, achieved so much for our area and through the showcasing of each Pacific nation's performers, artists, and cultural practitioners. And Guam has participated in every FestPAC since 1972. Our FestPAC in 2016 highlighted what we on Guam have been experiencing for decades, a cultural renaissance. This has happened in part to our participation in FestPACs throughout the Pacific and to our artists throughout the island, who have made it their mission in life to promote and to perpetuate our culture. Our artists have done so much over the years to recapture our traditions and language. They have done so much to provide a new sense of identity, pride, hope, and most especially, all of these positive things to our youth. We know the sponsor mentioned how we can see this direct link in supporting our youth through the arts, giving them a positive outlet, a form of expression to find themselves, and to stay busy, and to promote the values and the cultural practices of our island. And although there are concerns regarding other pressing issues in our community, I think we can all take a step back... think we can all take a step back and understand that this is an exceptional opportunity for cultural exchange for our island. Showcasing Guam's uniqueness at FestPAC has the power to produce, as one of our colleagues mentioned earlier, economic opportunities for Guam through potential visitors. And not only will artists from Guam experience and unite with our Pacific brothers and sisters, but they will also have the chance to engage in critical conversations about sustainability, rising oceans, gender equality, and so much more. Many of us campaigned on the promise that we would look to long-term solutions for community issues. And I think this is something that helps us to look at a long-term solution. It's not just a quick fix for the next FestPAC coming up, but it allows us the opportunity to plan and prepare ahead. It's setting us up for a better future for all of our artists and to spread our culture throughout the community. So I'd like to thank the author of this bill, and I ask that our colleagues join us in support of Bill 249. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Bueno, Legislative Secretary Shelton. Senator Jim Moylan, on the main motion, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I attended the public hearing, and I had a chance to really digest a lot of the notes that were provided in the committee report. To start off with one important committee report, it's from the Board of Directors, the chairperson himself, Francis Guerrero. He made two points really, really clear in my mind. First, he does agree with this bill that on the portion that Kaha is being designated as the lead agency for the planning and administration of Guam's participation in FestPAC. That's a good idea. What I don't see strongly coming out is the funding here being used for FestPAC and the funding that they have, no permanent funding source. And it's a challenge, and they recognize it's a challenge all the time for the legislature to find this funding support. So, one important point made from the chairperson is that to assume that the success of FestPAC delegation can always be funded by a percentage of arts money is just not realistic. And then what he went into next, or Francis, I'm sorry, Francis Guerrero went into next was, and what seems to be most important to them is, they submitted something during the public hearing on a draft about the rules and regulations, which one of my colleagues talked about as well. And the current law, they said it doesn't allow Kaha to use the funds for other projects, supporting the arts such as education and apprenticeship programs, exhibits of local art at local art festivals. And they even want to bank some of the money for the eventually funding construction and forward maintenance for a true cultural and civic center, what was mentioned earlier. They just seem to, like nomads, go from place to place wherever they can find a little home. But they want to bank money because that's a goal of theirs, so they can actually exhibit, have an exhibit gallery and a performing arts stage or other permanent spaces. That's what they really want, it seems to be, at least according to the Board of Directors. So a public building, they want to see that addressed in this law. And they also submitted their draft rules and regulations, which included 25 amendments, and they asked us to include this in Bill 24935. So I would think that, at least from the Board of Directors on the Council of Arts and Humanities Agencies, that that seems to be their priority. So, I'm not sure, maybe I can just ask the author if any of these 25 amendments that came in regards to the rules and regulations from the Board of Director, the Chairperson, Francis Guerrero, was considered to be included in Bill 24935?
Would you like to yield to that question, Senator Titunel?
Huguen. I've been working with Kaha on a monthly basis. We have regular meetings, and we've been going page by page, sentence by sentence, section by section, over the rules and regulations. So we're working very, very closely with them. And we have discussed with them, it needs to be its own bill. Bills that become too weighty, too complicated, they go in this direction, that direction, they become very difficult to deal with. So we are working on that very specifically as a bill to address those issues.
Thank you, Senator Titunel. Senator Moylan?
Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate that. I'd just like to continue on the main motion. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You do have several minutes. Please proceed.
Thank you. Another letter also comes from the acting director of Kaha, Jackie Bobas. And again, this letter points out that they are truly in favor of Kaha being the lead for future FestPAC promotions and organizations. So we don't have this problem of who's in charge and when it started and anything, but they already know in the future, hey, we want to be it, and let's be it, and so we can plan for this permanently. But again, the president, I'm sorry, the director, acting director, is also concerned that this funding that we're using is not a permanent source. It's been mentioned before, Kaha does not receive monies on an annual and consistent basis. And they would like to use a percentage of this fund, again, to expand programs for the initiatives that benefit Guam's artists, cultural practitioners, arts organizations, and overall for the people of Guam. They want to build a permanent home for the council. And they're asking us to find alternative fundings for consideration for FestPAC. And if we are going to use some of these monies that they have in their bank now, they're saying have a threshold. There should also be a threshold on the amount of percent of arts money that can be utilized for FestPAC 2020. So that's a priority for the acting director of Kaha. Again, it was asked at the public hearing as well that Kaha would like to use the funds to expand our programs and develop new incentives that will benefit Guam artists, cultural practitioners, and art organizations as well, and to build a permanent home for the council. And they recognize that the money they have now, the $700,000, it almost seems like you won the lottery, but not really. But this money is just, it's like a once-in-a-lifetime, for now. I know we were talking about the other hotel being built, right, and the projection of the money that's going to come for that, the Tubaqie Towers. But right now, they're still in the negotiation stage, so we can't guarantee that that money is forthcoming yet. But yet, we're looking at using, according to the budget submitted, projecting over $300,000, which is more than, just about half of what's currently in their bank. Steve Guerrero, from our director of the Office of Finance and Budget, is saying that this bill also allows the use of monies collected to fund travel and shipping expenses, cargo and logistical support. But this project is not included in the fiscal year 2020 budget. It's not included in Kaha's budget. Kaha has plans that they want to use their monies for, the long-term goals. So the cost of the program will have a financial impact on the fiscal year 2020 budget. So, Madam Speaker, I think the Board of Directors, and I think the director of Kaha has some great ideas on how to help grow our cultural, promoting our culture here on Guam. And they want to have something permanent and long-lasting. They're willing to give some money to FestPAC expense, but I think their priorities are something long-term here for the island of Guam. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. If there's no one else wishing to speak, I move Senator Titugue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On the bill, the bill has been nicknamed a FestPAC bill, but really, this bill is, in my mind, it's a percentage of the arts program that's been in place for many, many years, vision of those who were in the legislature long before us, to set aside money from buildings that were subsidized by the government of Guam, to set aside 1% of the construction costs for arts. And this program has been used over these years to promote these artists, to help them, to give them grants, so that they can build their art. And we have seen the benefits of this, and it was also, we see the benefits here in the legislature. It was also a program that would put art in our lives every day in public buildings. We see the beautiful artwork in Guam, the GPA, the Power Authorities Building here in the legislature, many other buildings in the government, you see this. And I think we've all benefited from this, and it's a great program to set aside money when we are subsidizing those buildings, when the government of Guam is subsidizing those buildings, to set aside money for the arts. So this particular program sets aside 1%. And because, for example, the GRMC had a qualifying certificate that was deemed, you know, that was one of the requirements, that it would be required under this program to also either put up this amount of artwork in its facility or to, they had the option to pay cash. So they put up some artwork, and the rest of it, they've agreed to put in through installments So the bill, in the first substantive section, designates Kaha to be the lead agency. In addition to the list of duties in the statute for Kaha, it adds one more duty, and it adds the duty that it will be the official lead agency for planning and administering for Guam's participation in FestPAC. And I completely support this. I think it's long overdue. It should have been done a long time ago, and I thank the author for doing this, and it's a great idea. It's been done in every appropriation bill for FestPAC. They designate Kaha as the lead agency, but it's never been done permanently. So I think it's a great idea, and I very much support that that is done. The second section of the bill just clarifies the definition of works of art, to include all the types of art that are already listed under this statute, but just to make it absolutely clear, so there's no legal finesse needed, that it includes, you know, the performing arts and the traditional arts, all the arts. And so that's what we do in section two, and I absolutely support that to clarify the definition of arts. Section, is there an issue? On section three of the bill, Madam Speaker, this is the section that we have spent the most time on today because the section in the percentage for the arts law currently reads that there shall be no money expended from this program for travel. So that's why we are seemingly arguing, because of this travel prohibition, using these funds for travel was prohibited for all these years. They made an exception in one year, but it was very limited. And so we are here now, and thanks to the amendments, we are here considering in this section to just allow an exception to this travel prohibition for this one FestPAC coming up in 2020. And I support that lifting of the travel prohibition, use of these funds for travel. Is there an issue, Madam Speaker? Okay. So I support lifting the travel prohibition for use on FestPAC, the 13th FestPAC in 2020. But what I, my only concern with this bill, Madam Speaker, is what was discussed at the public hearing and what I think, you know, has been the gist of this all along. While we all support the arts, and it sounds like the majority of us support FestPAC, I don't know if anyone doesn't, I mean, we've all benefited from it, our community benefits from it. There's no argument there. The argument is whether we allow the entire percentage of the arts program, which is almost $1 million, it may be $800,000 by the time this FestPAC is done, $800,000 to be used for FestPAC, that would be unprecedented for any of our delegations to FestPAC. We've heard amounts like $250,000, I think it was larger than that, over $300,000 when they went to the Solomon Islands in 2012. And of course, it was, is a whole other ballgame when it was here, that we were the host. But for the travel for our delegates, it's been reasonable. It's been $250,000, it's been $300,000 relatively, because I believe $700,000 or $800,000, given this type of background, given what, you know, everything we know about FestPAC, is unreasonable at this time. And so I just think there is really, we should have no need to fight here. I think we all want the same thing. We want to get this done. They say it's urgent so we can lock in airfare. We should get this done quickly, but we should not. I have the utmost respect for the Kaha Board. I think they're very competent. But the gist of this bill is that we're putting them in charge at this very late hour. That's the issue. If they had been in charge all along, perhaps they would have a plan that would have saved us some money. But we're scrambling now, and I just, I just know from experience, the later we get, the more pressure is going to be put on them. They already, all boards, I mean, let's be realistic. I think it's unrealistic and a myth to say that boards are immune from political pressure. And in this case, they are going to be under the pressure cooker of time and getting to Hawaii in just a few months and getting all this material that we need to get to Hawaii, getting the canoes to Hawaii. And I know that Kaha really scrambles to get this done, and so I want to give them everything they need, but I just think it's our job here to just be reasonable, to say, yes, we are going to allow you this huge exception to use the percentage of the arts funding that's been prohibited, you know, for use, this kind of use for years, but we're going to allow you to use it because we are in an exceptional circumstance right now, we are late. But please, let's be reasonable. Let's give them incentive to do what they said they might do, that they would try to cut the cost as much as possible. They would seek donations, they would, you know, try to get equity from performances or other showcases that they might have, and they would try all those things. But even if they didn't, if we just give them what they've asked for, that's only $310,000 versus $700,000 or $800,000. And I just find that to be reasonable, and I think it, I don't think the artists expect more than that. If we're going to cover their airfare and cover getting their materials there, that's what they want. So anything above that, I feel like that's not even what they want. I've gotten texts from them to say, we've paid our way before, you know, or parts of it, we can do that again. But this bill would allow us to pay their airfare, cover the cost of getting the stuff there, and still be reasonable, still be practical for now, for the future, for arts to prosper. That would leave money in the fund to do all the purposes that Kaha has asked for and to promote this for the rest of the years, the next three years before the next FestPAC. So, Madam Speaker, in support of these artists, we are, we want to give them this, if we're going to send them, let's get it done. So I'm proposing, and if you just pay attention on my floor amendment, because of the amendments that have been made earlier, just pay attention to the double underline, the last sentence, that's really what I'm adding, and I'll ask legal to make all the technical to accommodate prior amendments. So it's really just to add a sentence that would say, instead of a blanket fund, it would say no more than $310,000 may be expended pursuant to this section for this FestPAC. That's what they-- That's what they had requested, or that's the budget that they had submitted to us during the public hearing, Madam Speaker. So that would be my amendment, and I ask my colleagues to support this, because I think we should be united. We should show them our support, that there's really no reason to do anything else.
Thank you, Senator Chalai. On the amendment, I have Senator Marsh Tychenow, Vice Speaker Nelson. I apologize, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a point of information, there was a previous amendment that was passed by Senator Marsh Tychenow and Senator Perez. So essentially, this amendment will be deleting the last part of the previous amendment that was passed, not unless we make a technical correction with the...
Yes, I had asked that legal be allowed to accommodate the earlier amendments to the bill, because this was prepared before those amendments, and that this sentence would be added. That's my amendment, to add this sentence, not to delete anything, just to add the double underlined sentence that I read out loud to that section that has been amended.
On that motion inclusive of the technical changes, we are on that amendment. I do have Senator Marsh Tychenow and Senator Lee. Senator Marsh Tychenow, you are, Senator Marsh Tychenow, you are recognized.
Sutusmasi, Madam Speaker. I have an amendment to the amendment to proffer. You know, I had mentioned before, we're going through open government process, these are being audio recorded, we have masters that are on the board, we have very stalwart people that are there. And we hear in their own letter, this is why I have so much trust and faith in them, is they want to do many good things for the community with the money. They want us to be conservative, they want us to just identify this for this year. So I think they have all of that diligence in place. But in the spirit of compromise and making sure that if an additional layer of due diligence will make others feel comfortable, I think with our budget, with having to put so many things together two years later than normal, a year later, three years later than normal, there are still a lot of things in flux in the budget. So I would amend the amendment to cap it at $350,000 to provide that flexibility. We really don't know what the costs are going to be to get containers with canoes potentially and artwork from the shipyard to the necessary places and so forth. So at the very least, I would ask for that kind of flexibility.
Thank you, Senator Marsh Tychenow. There is an amendment to the Chalai motion, so I'm going to say that on the amendment, to the amendment by Marsh Tychenow, from $310,000 to $350,000, on that motion. Senator Lee, you're recognized.
Sutusmasi, Madam Speaker, and I want to thank the previous speaker for the amendment to the amendment. I rise in support of that, and just giving our artists the flexibility, just in case something might be a little bit more than projected, it still gives them that flexibility. But I agree, I agree that there are already protections in place, and that these are people from the arts community. They don't, they won't benefit in spending all of this money at FestPAC 2020. They benefit from doing their due diligence and making sure that we have enough, at the end of the day, for our entire community and for the people of Guam. Sutusmasi.
Thank you, Senator Chalai. On the Tychenow amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in objection of that amendment to the amendment. The amount that, the compromise, I think, from, I guess, $250,000 from previous years when we sent 150 delegates, and now we're only sending 100, and the $310,000 that was given to us in the expenses, didn't even incorporate the subtraction of the $61,500 that they're going to raise on their own. So basically, the $310,000, and on their expenses here, there's no room to try and lessen any of these prices, try to go out and find additional sponsorship. I'm pretty sure there's a lot of companies on this island would love to sponsor FestPAC. They saw what it was like on Guam, and they know that it's an exciting time, and, you know, thousands of people attend this. In Hawaii, it'll probably go up to 10, 20,000 people attending, even more. But Madam Speaker, the $310,000, again, based on this budget they submitted to us, was on the high range. They even said during the public hearing that they're going to work on the technical production part at $36,000, they were going to lessen that, they were going to try and lessen some other ones. But still, the $61,000 that they said they're going to raise, now there's no incentive to raise any money. We've got the full $310,000. So now you want to raise it to $350,000? What, $50,000 shy from the $400,000 that was originally requested? $310,000 was the compromise. $310,000 is exactly what they submitted the budget to the legislature. So, Madam Speaker, I rise in objection of that.
Thank you, Senator Tychenow. On the amendment, there's been an objection, although Senator...
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would just like to also rise in the spirit of compromise and say that we've made our point, I think, very clear, that we want the Kaha board, now that they're in charge, I think they're going to, you know, welcome the responsibility of being very fiscally responsible. And I do have a lot of respect for those members of the board, and I think, I hope that they will hear us, and that just keep in mind that they submitted a budget of $310. I don't object to allowing extra for, you know, unforeseen circumstances, so that they don't have to come back here between now and March, and they can get this done. But I, yeah, I think, I'm hoping they hear us. I know that they've been here in the gallery, they've been at the public hearings, all these years, they have proven to be very diligent. And I want, yeah, and so all we want is for them to be fair, we want them to, you know, be accountable. And I just feel like, we are all Chamoros, we want, we still want to be proud that we are, we can do this, we can be accountable, and we can get our people to where they need to go to showcase our island. Sutusmasi, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Chalai. I do apologize. Senator Marsh Tychenow, you can close if you wish, or call for the vote on your amendment to the amendment.
I think that was a very good closing, so I appreciate the support of the others. I mean, comparing something to 2008, unforeseen expenses, those really need to be considered. Sutusmasi.
Thank you. There's been an objection. All those in support of the Kelly Marsh Tychenow amendment signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. On the main motion, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Senator Marsh Tychenow, you can close. I do apologize, we have to close on the main, Terese Chalai amendment. On that amendment, as amended, are there any objections? None, motion carries. Now, Senator Marsh Tychenow, you may close on the bill.
Sutusmasi, Madam Speaker. So not only myself, but others have shared the many benefits of what participation in the Festival of Pacific Arts has brought to our community. Bill 249 empowers the Council on the Arts and Humanities. It explicitly identifies Kaha as the official lead agency for planning and administering for Guam's participation and representation in FestPAC. It solves the issue of who, how, and when preparation for our participation in FestPAC begins. Up until this time, preparation for FestPAC has been vulnerable to circumstances that have resulted in significant challenges and delays, which challenged the very success of our participation in FestPAC. Bill 249 also defines works of art to include traditional and performing arts, among others, by correcting the common misinterpretation of only providing for the inclusion of physical forms of art in public buildings. This clarification helps to fulfill the government of Guam's responsibility to foster culture and the arts throughout our community. FestPAC has fostered the revitalization of the Chamor culture and arts, which has strengthened our cultural industries and our economic mainstay of tourism. And it creates those cultural warriors who go out there to fight against the social ills. I ask my colleagues for their support in passing this needed legislation, and I thank them for all of their collaboration and strengthening of this bill. Sutusmasi.
Buen pobeso, Senator and Marsh Tychenow. On the motion to put it on the third reading, Senator Tychenow, please.
I motion to put the Bill 249-35COR into the voting file.
On that motion, without any objection, motion carries. Vice Speaker Majority Leader Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion recess till 3:00 PM to vote on the bills.
3:30.
3:30.
3:30.
3:30. 15:30, thank you.
Thank you. We are in recess till 3:30.